We'll call the meeting to order. If everyone would please stand and face the flag at the white line.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Seeing the agenda, there's no additions or changes to it. I would look for a motion to approve as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. No scheduled presenters this evening under reports granted to appear. And this is not our committee report session, so we'll drop down the public input. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the district about any matters concerning the district? Okay, we'll move on. Consideration to approve the financial report.
Josh is in basketball tonight, so I will cover that. If you've had a chance to look at it ahead of time, you can go over any specific questions you have. If you look up at the top, you'll see a merchant's bank, the bank balances. When you see $9.8 million, I'm sure you're like, oh my goodness, what, you know, what happened? That is that selling of those bonds that we had talked about, the ones that you had voted on. So obviously, that's a little higher than right now. That'll be your 2008 A and your debt service payment is also involved in that one. And then if you go down to the very bottom, where it says the 2007 A debt service and the 2008 debt service, those also include the payoff. And so that's why you'll see some different things at the bottom down there. But if you have any specifics, it's a really standard one this month. That's why we weren't worried about Josh being here. There's nothing out of the ordinary on this one.
Questions?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry. Do you hear a second?
I'll second motion.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it'll be removed from the consent agenda for a separate action. Questions on the consent agenda?
Before you go ahead and approve it, I would just really like to again thank the Ed Foundation. Obviously, you can see from the list there, all of the things they've done, the flipbook generator, they've done an innovative classroom in one of our special ed rooms. They approved a fur trader for Missy Clapham in sixth grade, drinking fountains at the elementary, vertical endeavors field trip, and last but not least, the orchestra hall field trip. The Ed Foundation has just been such a huge supporter of our school. I think when they have all of these in one month, it's worth recognizing. Thank you to them very much.
You should invite them in again, I think you do once a year, just to speak to what they do, who they are, and thank them. Anything else? I'm going to look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda. Seconded, anyone?
I'll second.
Kurt on the second. Further discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Old business ACT test results. Mr. Hodges.
I'm not bringing it up, right?
No. I like it, that's cool.
Where is it? What city is that?
I don't know if it's a real city. Is it? Doesn't look real. Without computers generally.
They're going to kick me out, there we go. So, I was asked at our last meeting to talk a little bit about ACT results. And as I said, I've got ACT results coming back into the early 90s. But what I pulled up here to take a look at is the ACT test results since I have been here. So since the 2009-2010 school year. So this first graph is the number of students tested. And as you can see, that number changes from year to year. And there appears to be more students tested in the last three years than there have been previous. And the reason for that is because we, just in 2016-17, did our third year of ACT testing all of our juniors. So in the past, juniors and seniors have both taken the test. So those numbers in the previous years before 2014-15 included both juniors and seniors. This number from then on is just juniors. So we still have seniors that retest all the time. And some of the juniors that took the tests when we did it during the school day also had tested before that. So that number right around 70, I would say, is kind of what our average is. So our junior classes are bigger than, obviously, than 75 or so. But there are some students who don't take that test. So that's the reason that you don't see like an 85 or an 88 in there. So this next graph is our average composite score. So the composite score is the score that you think of when students take the ACT. It's like 24 or 28, and there is a possible score of 36 on this. And as you look through the bars, you'll notice that in the last three years, again, there has been a bit of a decline in the average composite score, not only for the school, but also for the state. We are simply testing more students than we ever have before. So that's a direct relationship there. And when we look at some of the sub-scores going forward from here, you can see distinctly where scores were before the 2014-15 school year and then after, because there has been about a full 1.0 drop in that score across the board for everybody. And that's just because everybody is testing more students now than we ever have before. So there are four sub-tests that make up the ACT, the English, math, reading, and science. There is also a writing test that is not figured into the composite score for ACT. So I didn't put a writing test up there, and to be honest with you, I've only got writing scores for just a few years. I don't have those back as long as they do everything else. So again, these scores are out of 36, so each sub-test is scored out of 36. And then that composite score is made up of, I believe it's an average of those sub-scores. So what can I say about the test scores? I don't think that you can say that we are statistically different really than the state average, as far as the ACT scores kind of go across the board. So the bars show a little bit of difference here and there. But when you factor in the number of students taking the tests, there's really not a significant or statistical difference in our score and the state's score. Yeah?
Just understand, I know you said that we are now testing all juniors.
Correct.
So that's a change.
That is a change.
Seniors can test as well still.
Yes. So when I say we're testing all juniors, in the past, everybody has the option of taking the ACT, but you had to pay for it. And in the 14-15 school year, the state started paying for all juniors to take the test. So we are still testing all juniors across the state of Minnesota. The funding for that has changed, and the state no longer pays for that for everybody, I think as of this year.
It's one of those unfounded mandates that we continue to talk about. So they're requiring everyone to take this test, or the ASVAP or something. Tests cost about $45. Now they've removed the funding for it, but still are asking us to have everyone take the test. So we, along with many in the HBL, have decided to pay for it, because if you were making a kid take a test and then making them pay for it on top of it, you could really run into some problems.
Yeah. So the whole state is testing all juniors, so that has changed. And I'm just looking at the grounds level to make sure we're all apples to apples.
Right.
So we've changed who we're testing, but the state has also changed as well.
Yeah, and that's why, again, you see in those last few years, the bars are lower. And that's the reason. That's when the state went to testing everyone, and we went to testing everyone. So when we had, for example, when we had a year, if I back up here, in 10-11, it looks like it was a few over 75 students took the ACT test. That would be a combo of juniors and seniors.
Right.
And now, these last couple of years, that's juniors. So that doesn't include seniors that are testing.
Okay, so we're not looking at senior scores at all anymore. Now we've switched from all students to just juniors. Okay, okay.
And we don't pay if they want to retake it or up their score. The campus schools doesn't pay for that.
So, because you can super-score the ACT, correct? So are these super-scored, or is it just a straight composite?
Straight from that.
Okay.
Is this what colleges are looking at too?
Yeah.
So when we look at the composite score, they're dropping, but, or college is also conforming to that too in one way?
Well, you know, these are average. These are not individual student scores. So obviously, when we start testing every student, I think, I think I'm right in saying that we have generally between 60 and 80% of our students in a given year go on to post-secondary education. So that leaves between, you know, 40 and 20% of our students who normally don't. Those kids are now included in the ACT, in these ACT averages, whereas before, they weren't.
Okay.
So that explains the drop in average scores, and for the school and for the state. We're just simply testing students that normally wouldn't have been tested in the state, for whatever reason, whether they were not planning on post-secondary education or whatever.
What's the purpose behind an ACT? Everybody graduates, but there's such a difference in educational standards between schools. This allows a college to be able to...
Well, I don't know exactly what the intention of the state was when they started, when they did this mandate. My guess is that ACT has been around for a long time. It's a nationally normed test. And because it's nationally normed, there are some really kind of neat things that we can do with that data. We get really good data about college and career readiness based off of ACT scores. And we get some really good scores, or really good some information based on subgroups, based on the academic preparation of students who have taken the test. My guess is that the state, when there were some federal mandates that came in and started saying you need to do some college and career readiness testing, that happened at the state level also, and the state is not prepared with anything that would give them that information. It's already built into ACT. So it was an easy, it was an easy kind of thing for them to do, to be able to gather that data, and still provide something that's useful. You know, the way I look at ACT and MCA is this, is that the ACT is a test that kids take seriously, because a lot of the students that we have to take it, it's meaningful for them, because they are planning on attending college. MCA is just a day in the life of the kid, taking the test. And that test is, has less meaning for them than anything else they do, because there's not any graduation requirements tied to it anymore. It means nothing for grades, it means nothing for them, other than it's a couple of days in a class period taking a test, so.
There have been some complaints on the monopoly of all of this. ACT also has some pre-test, the plan, and the explorer tests and things like that, that have gotten extremely expensive. But again, give the principals really some valuable information. But because there isn't other programs, they do raise the costs because of the uniqueness of the program. So it's kind of unfortunate in that way. It is a very good way to norm all students, but the expense of it is, you know, really kind of getting up there. A lot of schools have tried assessing a $15 fee or anything, and you kind of, if your kid is one of the 20% that isn't going to college, and then you're forcing them to take tests and pay for it, you're just going to run into problems, so.
Yeah, this year's, students out there, don't listen to this, but the school has to offer a college, what's it called, Jennifer? It's a college interest exam, basically. So we have to offer either the SAT or the ACT, and...
Or the ASVAP comes too, doesn't it?
Not anymore.
It doesn't, okay.
No, they took the ASVAP and the Accuplacer off the list, so. So anyway, ACT is generally, I think it's more widely accepted in the Midwest than the SAT is. So that kind of becomes our default. But again, we get some really good information from this, and it's probably, it's more useful, I think, to staff and to students, the information that we give out from ACT than the MCA. Because again, the MCA, it really doesn't do anything for students. It gives us an idea on that given day on how well-prepared students are based on state standards. This gives them, you know, if you're going to college, the college and career readiness marks that they give are pretty accurate.
Do you test this during the school day?
Yeah, so we have to offer it during the school day. So Jennifer, I'm going to fall back to you, because I can't remember. It's April 22nd, does that sound right?
It's okay, they don't need to say.
Yeah, it's April 20th something. We'll be offering it. So, and that's been fine. There are some, ACT has some pretty stringent requirements for testing environments. So when we do ACT testing, we have to shut the bells off. We have to find classrooms that are kind of away from the bustle of everything else. So we generally take the shop hallway and the art hallway and the classrooms. We have four spaces back there that we test kids in, and then we shut doors. So no bells, no students in the gym.
Some schools rent facilities, like rent a hall, and bring the kids to the place. It's easier than shutting. It works here.
Yeah.
But some of the other schools have had to get creative.
We also offer it on weekends if you pay as well.
Correct. We are, we test every one of the optional, you know, the Saturday morning testing.
Do we offer any, like prep courses or anything?
Jake, do we offer anything for community?
We have.
It just isn't, not enough.
Not a lot of interest in it.
Not enough interest.
And we've got, the counseling website has information.
And we hold a session with students, and the test is April 3rd, but we hold a session with the students, and we give them a review packet. And then that gives them information where they can find all sorts of sample questions.
Oh, okay. There's a lot of online tools too. Kids have just gotten really used to those resources where practice quizzes and things like that. And you're nodding your head because you guys, you know, you have...
And ACT has a, ACT has a...
They have some really very online things.
Is the SAT kind of going to the wayside then? Because I know...
You know, we have, we have a handful of kids every year who take the SAT. So I'd say it's probably less than 10. But the kids who are taking SATs are looking at...
Schools are...
Probably, yeah, you know, really highly competitive post-secondary institutions, and a lot of them are, if they want to go east.
If a student wants to take the test again as a senior, do they take the higher of the two?
Yeah, they take the higher of whatever.
But that's not on here.
Yeah, that's true. That's not the score.
No, they can take it twice as a junior as well. They can take it up to three times. So it's just the time that we give it in April that's up here.
You can take it as many times as you want to pay for it.
Right, okay, and then they super-score that. We're just going to take, we're just going to take the one time that we give it.
That's right.
Any other questions?
I bet this can be sent to you.
Yeah, that's all I got, believe it or not, I know.
You get these presentations, you can only have like five slides.
I know. Well, it's because I put all those graphs on that one, so.
Hard to read, make it small, that's good.
I can send it to you, how about that? Thank you. Thanks. Does you want this left up?
Uh, no, I'll sneak in here, I'll hop on. It should boot you out, I think.
Okay, next under old business, fieldhouse hours.
Yeah, there's no real discussion. I'll put them up on the board up on top here too. I believe Kurt, you were the one that asked if we could just bring it so that we know what the actual things were. There was some question on Thanksgiving Day. We end up having it open the day after Thanksgiving. The minutes it says day after is not, so here is the final, this is what you agreed to at the last board meeting, or that time before.
So it'll be closed for two days, Thanksgiving and two days of Christmas.
Which two days, the Christmas Eve and Christmas Day?
Well, I thought Thanksgiving, we just talked about one day.
Someone was here, and it's just how it worked out, the day after Thanksgiving, so.
So it was not officially open.
But these are the days you'll have it closed.
Okay, so Rob teased me last time about Thanksgiving, and I wanted it open, but now you're saying we won't be open in the future the next day.
That is correct.
And that's based on the decision that we made previously.
That is correct.
I don't believe it.
I don't remember that either.
Would you say it was February we did this?
I can't remember the two days. Lori, I didn't agree with it either. Lori brought up the actual YouTube video that was there, and it was what was decided, so.
Was it a unanimous vote?
I bet it was, it's...
I will say, there were people here the day after Thanksgiving, it was quite busy actually, so it was very busy. I think you've been in there.
It's the Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, we're going to be closed?
I was working, so they could have been, I don't know.
I do kind of resist that Friday. I don't know, I don't know why it keeps coming back up. I thought it was just that Thursday, huh? I don't want a chaperone. But I want someone else to...
That's the problem.
Yeah, right. You know, it's not worth getting into a big thing about it, but I'm sure I'll want to visit it next November.
That's not what I mean, John, that we got to keep moving right on there, I think.
If it was busy this year...
Well, you asked to have it on there, so that's why it's here. There's not really a discussion right now on it, unless you want to make it an agenda item. Right now, this is just for you to kind of see.
I know, I know. Keep making a petty, petty thing work here.
Okay, moving on. New business, consideration to approve the 1718 staff development plan.
This is required for you to approve this tonight for the World Best Workforce. We added to our, you have it in your packets as well. Not a lot has changed. The leadership of the teams have changed. Some of the goals, if you look down at the bottom, have changed. But other than that, this is a really standard staff development plan that meets all the requirements of the state of Minnesota. So my recommendation to you would be to approve it. If you do approve it, it will be on our webpage tomorrow, and then we'll move forward with the World Best Workforce as well. And they do a really, really nice job. Katie's on that committee, if she has anything additional she'd like to add, but I think they do a really nice job.
Yeah, they do. They think of...
Everything.
Everything, yes.
Is that staff development liaison, you're supporting this, our approval, right?
Yes.
That's a good one.
Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion too.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the 1718 best workforce plan for the Cannon Hall School.
I am not going to hand out the 142-page back-to-back document. I have it here, if you'd like to see it. I did make all of you a summary page with our goals that relate back to your strategic planning that you have approved last time. So there isn't a whole lot of change or anything to look in here. I've highlighted if the goal is met, goal is not met. If the goal hasn't been met, that's just something we continue to work on. And it's a goal that we've set for ourselves. We're not trying to impress anyone, we're not trying to do anything. It truly is a document to guide us in where we want to go in the future. So you won't see a ton of changes in here, other than the updating of the goals. You know, some of the, I know when Jennifer got over, she did some changing with the third grade goal, which I think is really, really a good thing, especially related to the literacy plan as well. If you have any specific questions, I can answer them, but this is a document that every district is approving either tonight or in December, and I would recommend approving it. And I've worked really hard on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the World Best Workforce for 2017-18.
Motion by Kurt. Seconded by...
I'll second.
Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution establishing combined polling place as required by statute.
Yeah, not much choice on this one. Lori can answer any specific questions you have. I've got it up on the board as well. But the main thing here is to combine a polling place, place must be a polling place that has been designated by the county or municipality, which is obviously our city hall. So Lori, am I wrong in saying that this is just protocol that we have to approve?
No, that's correct. We did it in August and listed the CCC, because that's where we've been for quite a few years, and we can't be there. We have to be at a designated location, or we deserve that as another spot that we will vote for.
Okay.
So we need a motion and a second, and then a resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry. Seconded?
I'll second.
By Kurt. Brenda?
Please, to vote for the resolution establishing combined polling place for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of the statewide election. Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that passed a 5-6-0 vote. Okay, consideration to approve a family medical leave.
Yeah, we've got a couple of them. The first one will be for Elaine Nelson. She is one of our teachers down at the elementary, and she will be going on maternity leave around January 15th, we think. Is that her? Okay, January 15th.
Motion?
I'll make a motion too.
Motion by Katie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion?
In all cases on family medical, we just follow the tenants' policy statutes, whatever the requirement is, right?
Okay. Any other things? All in favor of the approval of this request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Request for the family medical, once more?
Yes, this one's for Deb Karlick. She'll be having surgery on December 5th.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt. Seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Resolution to resolve, dissolve the co-op participation for girls' alpine skiing.
We're going to turn this one over to Jake, because he's got the details.
So, yeah, this is a request from actually Northfield. Redwing has asked to join our co-op. So in order to do that, we have to dissolve the current co-op, and then the next motion that you approve this, but to add Redwing to it. So currently, we haven't had a girls' alpine ski in a handful of years, so Northfield wants to add Redwing to the co-op, so I think it's probably a good idea to go along with
So the first one would be to dissolve, and the second one is to reapply, adding one school district to this.
That's correct, yep.
Look for a motion to approve a resolution. Okay, look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To dissolve. Motion by Jerry. Did I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie.
I don't see a resolution.
I asked Tom, Northfield's athletic director, if there is a resolution. He said all we need to do is approve it, is what he told me. Even though it says resolution, he says all we need to do is...
There is no resolution.
There's a boys' alpine as well?
Yep, we have boys, and we've had a boys' ski in the last few years, actually, a couple of years, but I don't think we'll have anyone this year. We also co-op with them in gymnastics as well.
So the boys' alpine, that's a different co-op?
Yep, just like our soccer co-op, the girls' co-op and the boys' co-op too.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to dissolve the co-op participation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution to apply for a new co-op. So just an extension of what you just talked about, we're adding a school to the co-op, and we'll need an approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, you see the informational items, we're a little behind on the ABDO ICS. They've had some internals, I guess. So, we're kind of waiting as patiently as we can. Truth and taxation presentation, approval of the levy certification, dishwasher quotes. Can you see the rest? Anything else?
It was a very busy board meeting. We tried to move as much up as we could, but unfortunately, we'll get a lot in on that December 1st. Remember, and please note that the date is a little bit different because of the holidays. Remember, we only have one meeting, so mark your calendars accordingly.
What day is that?
December 18th.
Kind of a bit what?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday?
Yep. It's just, it's the third Monday, we always do second and fourth.
There is the Monday. Just the third Monday.
I just, in looking at the information items coming down the line, we're looking at resolution of directing administration to make recommendations. With that, I've been, this is just some of the things I was looking at, sort of reductions, cost savings. And this is a challenge to put out towards administration as to where we are with the one-on-one initiatives. You know, we're riding this wave, and this, everybody's on this wave and riding this wave with technology. And I'm wondering, at what point do we look back and say, look, are we doing what we need to do for the classes that we have? Are we doing too much for some, are we not doing enough for others with the technology? The reason I ask that is because you hear some research out there saying, okay, you know, kindergarten through third grade, do you use one-on-one initiative, or do you not? Jury's still out on that from what you read. But there's, there's things out there that you read about, and for me, looking at it, it's like, okay, are we doing what we need to do? And I'm not saying we do or don't, but that's the challenge I put out there. Are we looking back, and we're saying, hey, this is where we can save some costs? Because do we, do we need this? Do we need iPads, sets of iPads in a class versus everybody having them? I guess if you look at it that way, they're all going to have one anyways.
You know, we are already on that track, and we do see.
Sure, that's the question I'm imposing. I'm just saying, are we looking back, and are we, or are we just still riding this wave like everybody else is? And are we doing?
We can't start having those conversations until you guys make this motion. So, once you do that, then we will, you know, we'll be having lots and lots of those meetings.
Right, and that's, I'm just putting it out there, that's just a question I have, so.
So, you're asking, you're basically asking, are we going back and reevaluating?
Yeah, exactly. Are we, are we just pushing for it, because everybody out there is on the same, you know, we're pushing, we're pushing, everybody's pushing technology. But at the same time, are we looking back and seeing where we've been? And is it working? Is, is there things we can change and possibly save money in the process?
Well, even this year, you reduced your technology budget by $40,000.
Yes.
You've made that, you know, our goal this year would be to double that, you know? Because once you've got the tools in place and you've got the infrastructure up, if you've done all of that hardwiring, or, you know, the major kind of skeleton of things, obviously, you should see those costs coming down, so.
And there'll probably be some laws of diminishing return eventually. My question is, are we applying it to the right classes? And do certain classes need it? Or are there other classes saying, you know what, based on studies, we might not need to do it for these classes? And as we move forward, we start to integrate them at a later stage? Just a thought.
But since you're on the technology committee, you get to make that recommendation.
Right, well, that's, and those are some of the questions as to why I'm asking.
Because that won't, the admin team will be taking the recommendation from the technology committee on what, how you want to move forward. So, remember, you are a really big part of that, that we take the recommendations from those committees.
Yeah.
When do we meet again?
For what tech?
That I need to generate. Next tech meeting.
Yeah. Not sure.
Don't think we've got one yet.
I think Lori has sent out a reminder about the state convention, and I'm sure she's cranking up to give commitments. I'm one who hasn't yet. So, just as a reminder, I'm sure she'd appreciate any inputs that she can prepare.
Are you guys mostly ready or able to go this year, or is it maybe?
Good.
Well, something unforeseeable happens.
Okay, looks like we're finished. On the side note, our cameraman had a birthday, and he probably doesn't want to.
Happy birthday to you.
His picture was in the paper.